Good evening. Please have a seat. Our meeting is ready to start. Welcome to the Yukon City Council Municipal Authority. It's November 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We're now in the chamber, council chambers in the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street, here in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. And before we start, is Pastor Gary Reynolds here? Okay, we just wanted to make sure. So we're gonna begin with Councilman Wooten, we're giving our invocation and followed by the flag salute.
Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we, we thank you for allowing us to meet tonight. Lord, I just pray that you'll give us wisdom. Lord, I just, I thank you for all the blessings that you shower upon this city. Or thank you for the students here tonight. Lord, I just pray that you'll keep them safe, keep our first responders safe, keep, keep our teachers safe. Lord, we love you, we praise you, and ask this in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Selby.
Here.
Kachini.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
Gilliland.
Here.
Right, do we have any presentations or proclamations tonight?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Right, do we have any visitors?
I have one request, Madam Mayor, from Sue Leach. I have a feeling, I thought there might be others, but uh...
And, well...
Sue Leach is the one that I have.
Do you wanna wait now? Do you wanna do it now, or when item three comes up?
When item comes up, please.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, then seeing that, at this time we'll recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate these routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of October 19th, 2021; B. Payment of material claims in the amount of $2,703. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yanda.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Right, we will now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all city council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of October 19th, 2021; B. Payment of material claims in the amount of $351,328.09; C. Designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D. Setting the date for the next regular council meeting for November 16th, 2021, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Selby.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Right, do we have any reports of boards, commission, or city officials?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3, consider approving a revocable permit from Claus Reiman Philip and Common Works Architects to act on behalf of Frontline Fellowship Church for property improvements, 425 West Main Street. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Is someone going to explain that?
Yes, Mitchell? Okay.
It's a revocable permit.
Okay.
Hello, Aaron Owen, ACO on Construction, part of the project team with the architect, and Chad Bucket with Frontline Church. Claus, who is with Common Works Architects, is not able to make it here this evening, so I'm stepping in place to represent. Basically, we're looking to get a revocable permit that allow us to put in a fire hydrant in the parking spaces, on one of the parking spaces along Main Street, at 425 West Main, to allow us to put in a fire suppression system into the facility to meet code for the life safety code for the assembly use. And on the north side of the, of the space, we need to encroach into, there's, there's an existing exit on the north side of the existing building that has a platform and a ramp that encroaches about four or five and a half feet into the alleyway, which creates the alleyway at 14 and a half feet. And we are proposing to basically rebuild that ramp. We're not gonna encroach into the alleyway any further than it already is, but I don't think that the way that it's currently built, I don't think it went through the current, the, the appropriate process to be approved. So, we're basically had submitted for approval to be able to put the ramp and the exit on the north side of the building, which will allow for two means of egress for the church. And these are both for life safety code and ADA complacency.
Did you know you would need these variances ahead of time before they purchased the building?
Do we know we need these variances?
Mm-hmm. And then you purchased the building anyway?
So you're looking to, you're gonna end up taking one parking spot in front of the building?
Correct. And, and we'll stripe it, hash it off for, in order to have a location to put a fire hydrant. There's a fire hydrant currently at Fifth and Main, but we need to get one closer to the facility to meet code.
Can I ask you a question about like the church itself? In the event you have events during the week, what, where would you plan to, everyone to park?
So, we're planning on putting a parking to the north. We'll put a parking lot to the north side, north of the alleyway of the building.
Which will hold how many people?
Which will hold approximately 35 slots, to my understanding. We're also talking about getting parking agreements with some local businesses here.
And you've spoken with those local businesses?
Pardon me?
You've spoken with those local businesses?
Has any of the local businesses have any issues with...
No, one of the businesses that we're talking to has not expressed any problems with that.
So you've talked with one business?
Yes.
Okay.
And have you spoken with the others?
No, have not.
Along, along those lines, the question Miss Yanda asked, has, has a part of the discussion been, oh, okay, yeah, so there's all these businesses right next door and across the street, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock's a pretty common time for a funeral. Has that been a part of the discussion where say, okay, if we have these types of events, weddings, funerals, conferences perhaps, that, that the church is wanting to make stewardship of that space by saying, we need to have those in the afternoon or the evening, or a different time of the day or week for those particular events? Not that we could necessarily hold you that, but I'm curious if that's been a part of the conversation.
I think our conversation has largely been around, how do we, how do we love this city? How do we help the, the whole block and try to, to be good neighbors in every sense of it? And so part of it is scheduling, part of it is thinking about how we impact the block and how we can be a blessing to the block as well.
Have you met with any of these other business owners?
I have met with some of them. I haven't met with all of them.
Really? Okay.
What made you choose that location?
We, we looked all over the place. We looked at all sorts of different options. We originally walked this two years ago and continued to just be drawn back to an area of the city that seemed like it needed real love, not just, not just visually. It's a great spot in the city, but in area in which our heart is drawn to. So we're one of five churches that are all connected together, and part of it is going to the marginalized, going to those that are on the edges and need help. And as we see this city, we just continue to say, we wanna be right in the middle of it. So that's what led us right back downtown.
I think I'd like to hear from some of your neighbors. Okay, who do we'd like, do you have a list? Sue, would you please state your name and your address? And be, realize that we cannot make any comments on what you say.
Okay.
So we're not being rude, we're just can't do it.
Okay, I'm Sue Leach, and I own 451 and 453 West Main. The church has never approached me at all, or any of my employees, about putting the church in. One parking spot's gonna make a big difference. Not only that, we do have to look at funerals, weddings. We're retail, we pay sales tax. We provide employees' salaries. And I think the encroachment they're talking about, when I look at the plans on your website, it says they're gonna be planters. Well, Chesky Peroncho is the alley. It's actually a street. So, I object a great deal.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to talk? Grady, go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Grady Cross. I own two businesses for 11 years on Main Street Route 66, historical Route 66. I've never seen either one of you approach my building, ask me what's going on, or you're coming in. My biggest question is, how are we supposed to shop Yukon? With the prettiest historical building we have here. Where are we gonna shop Yukon? You got that one? There's no shopping at a church. Me, I understand to have coffee and stuff sometimes, but uh, it's, it's just, um, I feel it's a little arrogant. We are, we are, um, single business owners, fighting for our lives right now, and you guys wanna bring a tax-free church, one of 80 that's in Yukon? For, how does that help us with retail? Because a lot of times, we know that there are some businesses open on Sundays that don't get tips. I object completely.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes ma'am? You can give that to him. No, just hand it to him, but go ahead and you'll have to state your name and your address.
My name's Micah Spicer. This is my husband Preston Spicer. We just purchased 419 West Main. We looked at the plans that Frontline proposed, and we were a little concerned about the parking spot being taken up. We wanted to ask if it would be possible if we could move that parking spot that they're wanting to designate over to the west, more in front of their building.
So according to the, the plan that's in here, they've got it kind of, this is parking spot that, with those being angled, comes in front of our entrance. So if they move it one to the west, then, you know, it's kind of gives any potential tenants or customers that come to our building the ability to park closer to the entrance.
Right in front of it.
Um, and then the other thing that we kind of, not necessarily opposed to the ramp, but the original plans had a planter going all the way to, I think, the shared wall on our building. And...
To the east.
Yes, to the east. And we're not super thrilled about that idea. We've, we're one of the only ones with a parking spot back there. And already with that being so narrow, the turn radius is pretty tough to get into. So I just see that being an issue if they do extend that planter all the way.
There was also the sewage main line.
Yeah, the sewage main, and which I think Public Works, if I remember right in here, cleared it. But the sewage lines, the drain entry is right there at that corner as well as the gas meter. So, was just curious on more plans of what they have for that planter, if they still intended to do it or not. Just had concerns with the narrowness of that alley and that parking space.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Can I speak to that for just a second? Claus tried to resubmit some site plans showing the removal of that planter from our scope of work, but he wasn't able to get it in at a time after the agenda was already created. So that planter's already being removed and excluded from the, from the project as a whole. And I know that we did get approval through the city for the revocable permit for, from the utility department, so that should be cleared as well.
I, I have a question for you, Mr. Buck. It is Mr. Buck or Owen? Mr. Owen?
Uh, Mr. Owen.
Mr. Owen. Just want to clarify, does, the plans for the back of the building with the ramp, replacing the old ramp, it would basically be exactly where the current ramp is, is what you're saying? It won't extend into the driveway anymore than it already is?
It, it's not gonna extend into the alleyway any further than it already is. However, it is gonna move further to the east.
Which is by their building?
Clo- closer to the corner of the property, not all the way to the corner, as it shows on the plan. The current ramp doesn't meet code, and the...
Because of the length and the pitch and all that?
Right, right.
Is it encroaching on the neighbor's property within three feet or two feet, or what's the...
No. It, it's, it's within the footprint of the, of the building at 425. It just encroaches into the alleyway, currently.
Which is gonna, is, did you say that would make it difficult for you to park?
It's, it's, it'll, it'll be the same width that it currently is.
Yes.
I'm talking about the alleyway parking. I think you were talking about the, on the south side, where the fire hydrant is.
No, who's talking about the alleyway?
So we've got a covered parking in the alleyway on the east side.
Okay.
Good, so let him speak, yeah?
Yeah. And this is more of just a question. I went and measured it. And it's, it's roughly 48 to 50 inches long, so, or maybe 52. But you're, I think, talking to do it five foot six. So it's based on these plans, so it's a little bit larger. I don't think it's that much to say. I just wanted to put that on the record to say that I think it is a little bit wider.
Five foot six is why I mean it's code.
Okay, okay, for the ADA?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I, I didn't know that.
Yeah, okay.
The only issue we had was whether or not it was gonna inhibit the turning radius into, because it's really narrow, because we've got the recessed parking, and so you've gotta turn around to get in there and then back out. So, as long as that ramp isn't like right there at the edge...
And it's not. You saw where the planter was drawn. That planter's just basically going away. Everything else is staying where it's shown.
Okay.
Okay, so that, it's not gonna go farther east? Because I thought you said it was moving farther east.
From where it currently is.
Yeah.
But on the drawing where it shows is where it's staying.
Do you, do you know roughly from the property line how far the edge would be?
I...
I don't know if we need to take that off, offline.
I've got a plan I can look at. I don't remember off the top of my head.
That's okay.
So, I, I'm, I'm trying to kinda compartmentalize a couple, there's two things, right? We've got a ramp in the alleyway, we've got a parking space in the, on Main Street.
Correct.
The alleyway, does anybody in the room know, is it a zero clearance property? I mean, you can go right up literally to your property line legally with structures attached to your building? Is that, is that right?
Okay, we're in the business district basically, and the buildings are on the property lines typically. This one sits right on the property line on the rear, as well as on, well, I guess the north and the south side. Walls on these are typically common walls. They're shared by businesses on both sides. The one request they have, the ramp, that's all in that 20-foot ut, 20-foot alleasement.
That's the revocable permit, so...
That is the first portion of it.
So if we need a gas line repaired or whatever, they know that that might get destroyed and...
With the revocable permit, it allows us to remove that ramp at their cost for removing it as well as putting it back.
Okay. But, but the plan for that ramp, essentially that's their space to do with what they'd like as long as they have proper permit.
Not the ramp. The ramp, they're here to ask for you to grant a variance to allow it into that alley.
So when somebody would, was looking at that property, and Frontline wasn't the only party over the last few years that have looked at that property, would there be any reason for that possible purchaser to presume that the ramp that is there now would need a special clearance from the city to remain?
Well, originally, if you're asking me to design the building, it was probably a step, you stepped right out into the alley. Sometime along the way, somebody built a wooden one and put in there. I'm not for sure how and when.
So currently, it's illegal?
Currently does not meet our requirements, if that's what you're asking.
But somebody that came to buy the property wouldn't know that until after they buy the property and decide this needs to be upgraded?
I would have, I don't know what their due diligence told them, but it's one of the things that we discussed before we moved forward with the building permit review, that they had to address these issues before we could even move forward.
Okay.
So this is why they're here, is because we did know there was a problem, as well as they needed to put something in permanent.
I have another question for you, Mr. Whore. On the, on the fire hydrant, is there any reason that a, a facility or a business can't ask for variance on that particular issue? And say, well, can we move in without having a hydrant?
Well, actually, this is the connection to, the fire department would hook to in event of a fire. It's a point that you'll see on the nozzles on the building that they can hook a hose to, and they will hook their fire truck up to it to produce pressure to be able to slow the fire spread, or whatever it may be that's protecting. So, that point in front of it has to be open to allow them to pull the hoses they need to connect to the building for that purpose.
And that would be a new installation?
That is the second, that is one of the things they're asking for about the parking space to be open, so that time, that allows the fire department access to the building at all times.
So as it is, if it's, I mean, C3 is C3. So what is the difference between the church and, and retail?
This is central business.
Okay, so, but the question remains of what's the difference in a church being there or a retail store being there in terms of the fire hydrant being required?
The fire protection system is because it's assembly use. Assembly uses typically have to be fire suppressed in all areas of that structure. It is a two-story structure too as well, and it's a, it has wood framing inside too, which is another issue that we had. So any occupant load over 50 in assembly use has to be suppressed, which it means a sprinkler system upstairs, downstairs, and wherever it may need by code.
And a hydrant, a, a different ti, a typical hydrant that we think of wouldn't, it wouldn't suffice if it was down at the end of the block?
What they're gonna do is run a fire line in from the city main. They'll have to cut the street, connect to the city main, run a fire line into the building. And this is just an additional connection to allow the fire department to connect to during a fire situation.
And you couldn't do that?
No, you have to have both.
And those costs are all on the church?
Yes, the cost is on the developer or the property owner, that's correct. The city has no cost they'll incur on that.
How long will the parking places be torn up, or the equipment in there?
Depends on the contractor, anywhere, I don't know their contractor. The next thing they would have to do is get permission from ODOT. Timing on that's gonna be pretty tight. Depending on the type of concrete they pour, it's anywhere from seven to 14 days. They may be able to reduce that. Huh?
Will ODOT let them do that with that on board?
They won't completely close the street, but there'd be one lane that would be closed at a time. And I'm not for sure where that wireline falls. We haven't actually gone full lengths to figure that out.
Is there gonna be any construction on the sidewalk itself?
I would assume they would have some where the entrance is at. That was something they'd have to address, how much construction is on the front of the building or the facade of the building. But the first floor, I think there is some, but like I said, we have not reviewed the plans. When we seen the two issues, we brought those up first, because we didn't wanna do a complete review until they got approval.
I would like to hear what your plans are for the historical front of the building.
For the historical what?
Historical front of that building.
Uh, there's not really any plan to change the exterior facade.
You're not gonna tear that out to put in a...
There's gonna be some sidewalk that will need to be removed just to run the FDC line in from the, what we're calling the fire hydrant, which is really a fire department connection.
But the front of that building where all that tile and that metal frontage is, what are your plans for that?
To leave it in place as much as possible.
Yes ma'am, to preserve as much as we possibly can. We want to respect the historicity of the building. We wanna respect just the, the tile work that's on the floor, the tin that's on the ceiling. The entire building itself is a beautiful spot, and we're doing everything that we can to maintain that.
I have a question for Mr. Buck. On the parking, the parking to the north that would hold roughly 35 vehicles, is that property a part, part of the purchase? Is that, are, are you leasing that from somebody?
Yes sir, no, that is part of the purchase.
Okay, and are you, I'm not sure how many employees would be on a regular basis at the, at that location, but is that a, a location that the retail businesses on, on that block would be welcome to use as long as they're open during the week?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think the, the parking itself that we would be adding to it is simply another spot for the city to use, for other people to use. We're not closing that down to anyone.
What's your current congregation number?
Roughly 250.
So about how many cars?
I couldn't answer that one directly. We have a lot of children, so...
So those 35 might not be adequate?
No, those 35 probably would not be adequate right there.
Okay, anyone else care to speak?
I will just say to address the one question about the location of the parking space that we would be hashing off for the FDC, we would be more than happy to move that back to the west, per the request from the neighbor. So that's not, that's not a problem.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure if I, Mr. Whore, sorry to call you back. I'm, my question is, is the fire hydrant something that can, a variance can be requested on? I mean, can we even, is that even something that can be requested or applied for?
You're talking about the requirement of the, losing the parking space?
The requirement of having a fire hydrant on that wall in that location, is that something that, that we could vary from, or that they could apply for variance on?
Well, the problem is, is the building location. We do not wanna put that fire truck in that alley because of the tightness and the power lines and everything. We wanted to put that fire truck on Main Street where they have access and plenty of room, since it's a two-story structure. So that connection has to be on the south side because we don't wanna put that fire truck in the alley where they're only got 15 feet possibly. And the ladder truck would probably have a tough time in that alley. And we don't wanna put them that close to that structure. So that connection on the building is gonna come out probably six inches, maybe the most.
But is, but is there a process by which Frontline could apply for a variance from even having a hydrant as a requirement for occupying the building?
Not for fire protection. With the state of Oklahoma, it's required to have an architect, and he's required to meet the minimum standards of the state of Oklahoma's building code. So he'd have to comply with that. The state farm marshal would make sure that he complies with that. So the building has to be suppressed.
Okay.
And it has to have a fire alarm system in it too as well.
And sprinklers?
Yeah, so if we don't enforce the code, the state will come in, the state farm marshal would.
Okay.
Especially on assembly uses. They seem to know about churches and stuff, so we don't wanna vary that, especially the age of the structure and stuff.
So right on Main Street and the parking lot, there'll be a fire hydrant?
It's not a fire hydrant. It's a connection that's in the wall. It comes out about six inches. Depending on the design, it may have two connections for fire hoses, or it may be one.
And will it stick out into the sidewalk?
Just a little bit. It'll be on the front of the building. Depending on how much they leave of that building, it, it won't, you won't see it. It won't be an impediment to the people on the sidewalk. And the parking to the north that we talked about, we're actually requiring them to have handicap accessible parking that will get people into the building. And that's one of the things that they're having to meet with this as well.
Okay.
So the parking to the north, will that, that be in that open lot?
Yes, they, it's part of it. In, it's in your, your packet. It shows the two tracks that they have purchased or owned.
And then that's right behind where the old lumber mill?
That's right against the lumber yard. Yeah, lumber yard. The lumber yard's right against it on the east side.
Thanks.
Okay. You have other questions?
Not for...
Not for, not for you, Mitch.
Not for me yet.
But for the, I heard you say there were going to be a lot of children. First thing I think of is all the churches that I've gone to, there's always been an area for kids to play. And I'm trying to think, if you put all that parking back there, where are these kids gonna go to play? You know, I just, I'm throwing that up to you. I, I, I've gone to a lot of churches and I, I see a lot of areas built for children.
Yes.
And they're not gonna stay inside the building when it's sunny out, I don't think.
Well, we are not planning on putting in a playground out there for that. We, uh, have done this in several spots. Our downtown congregation, downtown Oklahoma City congregation is one that is in a similar area of the city. And we're planning on using the entire upstairs for kid's space, the entire upstairs, and leaving portions of that open for free play and trying to make that more accommodating. But we have no plans to put in an entire, say jungle gym or something to that.
Any more discussion?
I, I, I have a couple more questions. Um, well, maybe I'll, I'll start with a comment. These situations are difficult. There's nothing that says a church can't move into this facility. So they buy the, the property, whether due diligence was, was done on every single issue or not, we don't know. Uh, but then they, they buy the property because the, the occupancy, the type of, uh, establishment meets all the requirements for that area of town. And then they buy the property and then we say, oh yeah, if you wanna do what you plan to do, you've gotta add a fire hydrant, which will eliminate a parking spot and uh, you're gonna redo the, the ramps. Now you gotta get permission to do, it, it's kind of a difficult thing. It, it really just is. So my question, so it brings me to the question, what, what if the council says no to these permits? What's, I mean, and I don't know if, if you have the answer to that.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't answer in a vacuum. I, I'm part of a team as well. And so I wo- work with a group of elders and people, so I couldn't fully answer that. One of the things that we've tried to do over the course of time is work with the city, work with Mr. Hore and others to try to satisfy the conditions that are required. And there are a lot of requirements. We knew that going into this. And so we've done our best to try to satisfy those requirements. If it were to come up that somehow we were not able to satisfy the requirements of the city, I would have to take that back to my leadership team.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Hore, what, what would the ramifications be if this council, um, votes no to these permits?
Well, the, the, basically, the review would not go on because we would not have the ability to address the things that need to be addressed. So we'd be at a stalemate. Basically, we would shelve any plans they submitted for review and they wouldn't move forward until some approval was approved because there's no way for them to get a ramp on the back of this building without encroaching in the alley easement. And there's no way for them to provide their fire protection without removing a space on Main Street.
And they wouldn't be able to meet with more than fifty people at a time.
So they can't do any work in the building currently, can they?
No, they are not allowed to do any work until all the reviews are done. That's one of the things that we do to make sure that all approvals are in place. And this, these approvals had to be in place before we even started our actual review. Now, we did a cursory review and walked through the billing. This is the things that will have to be addressed. But we've not done an actual plan review on the structure or on the plans.
Can she speak again? Okay.
My question is, if we do that in the back, that ramp, we can't get trucks in to deliver our merchandise. It's gonna be too narrow.
Uh, uh, it's my understanding that, that the new ramp will be exactly where the old ramp is, just a little bit wider, not, not further in. So are trucks able to get through now?
I don't believe we're supposed to ask questions of our visitors. Doug, is that correct?
It's on the agenda, I think.
It, for an agenda item, you can have discussion.
We can't ask them, okay, I thought we weren't supposed to speak to them.
Right now for trucks to get to through there and, you know, all those businesses.
Are we talking about driving by or are we talking about backing in or turning in and parking behind?
We're talking about trucks delivering merchandise.
But so just using as the driveway, yeah.
Going down Chesky Broncho.
So it's my understanding that, that the road will still be just as wide as it is now?
No, it's going to take, how many, how many inches are you taking?
So it'll be five and a half feet, which will leave fourteen and a half feet. The width of a drive is twelve feet if you were to drive a single lane road. It's twelve feet wide. So it's wider than a single lane road.
But does the state have a requirement on that?
Did you wanna say something to him?
There's also, so on the north side of that, there's the telephone poles, and I don't know if that's taken into account on the, the width of it or not. Um, that's just a note. I do wanna say we need the love of God more now than ever before. Um, so my wife and I, we're not necessarily opposed to it. We just asked that, you know, we have the conversation. You guys have already made kind of agreements with us. Um, and I, I can't speak for everybody on Main Street, but I do, I mean, there's still concerns about parking, right, for the retail spaces. We're looking at leasing it out. Um, so whatever tenant we get in there is gonna want parking spaces for their customers. So, I mean, that is a concern, but not necessarily opposed to it, so.
And I definitely believe we need the love of God, but I'm just not sure that it's setting a good precedence for the other businesses either.
Well, my current thought would be, um, we've already got one amendment to the application that wasn't submitted yet. That's been mentioned by moving, moving the hydrant over one parking spot. The plan eliminate, but that's not submitted. That's not even something that we are voting on tonight.
But you still have the ramp going in.
Without the planners though, right? So I would encourage this council to consider tabling the issue until some of the more pressing issues that the, that the retailers in the area brought to the church's attention this evening, uh, can be addressed. Perhaps amongst themselves, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make any recommendation on how they should do that, but I'd like to give them the opportunity to do that before this council votes on it. I, 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 I uh, have personal experience with Frontline Church some years ago in a difficult time in my life and, 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 and I've seen the work that they do front, I mean, you know, up close and personal. I think they could be an asset to the, to the city. Um, I understand the, the concern about the lack of, that the church will be taking up space that is, could be retail space that provides revenue for the city. We don't get to vote on that. Uh, but we can, we can vote on these other issues. And I, I would encourage the council to consider, uh, table it until the amendments to the application can be made and maybe even some, uh, discussion with the neighbors about how we could further, uh, you know, work together, appease some of the concern.
Right, did you wanna say something?
I just wanna remind everybody here on the council that not too long ago, a gentleman bought a piece of land and wanted to put X number of houses, but he was not allowed to. And he had to follow the ordinances, so he was out some money. That's because he didn't follow the ordinances, didn't check with certain people. I'm not saying anything wrong with these folks, but I'm just saying that we have ordinances, we have laws, and they have to be followed. And, uh, the guy even came to my house, knocking on my house, wanting me to change my mind. So I realize the, the issues here and you, and you, we should have looked at everything before we moved ahead and and I, I'm sorry that it wasn't done prior to taking over the ownership of that property. That's all I'm gonna say.
And I can tell you, I'm a women's pastor at a church on Main Street. But our building doesn't infringe upon our neighbors and it doesn't infringe upon the city property and safety. Um, so I'm not opposed to churches. Um, Eric has made, are you making a motion to table it?
I would make a motion based in particular on the fact that they have amendments they would like to submit currently, uh, to the, the application. So I would make a motion to table this item.
We need is to postpone probably because that allows us to bring it back.
Uh, yeah, I'd motion to postpone this item for at least fourteen days.
He's saying postpone now.
If we postpone, we, we can put it right back on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
So postpone.
Ms. Yonda, you had the second on the original motion that Mr. Gilliland has amended. Do you wish to second again?
That's, I'll second it.
Okay, so now we vote.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
No.
Kachini? Selby?
No. So now we go to where we vote on the motion that was made on three. Consider approving a revocable permit from Claus Ryman Phillips and Common Works Architects to act on behalf of Frontline Fellowship Church for property improvements four twenty-five West Main Street. Please vote.
What are we voting on now?
We're voting on number three, what you made the, we made a motion and we already seconded that, so we're voting on the actual proposal. So we're voting yes or no to approve the revocable permit from Claus Ryman Phillips and Common Work Architects to act on behalf of Frontline Fellowship Church.
Ready? Selby?
No.
Kachini?
No.
Wooten?
No.
Gilliland? Yonda?
No.
Okay, item number four. Consider approving resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the city of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma for the purpose of electing one council member from Ward one and one council member from Ward two for a four-year term ending in May twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item five, consider approving resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, a resolution to execute the agreement establishing the Oklahoma Municipal Management Services. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item six, consider approving change order number one to the twenty twenty contract and asphalt paving drainage, water and sewer project in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars to allow for tree removal in the Westport Drainage Ditch Project as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
How many trees are we moving in this roughly?
I don't, I don't know the exact count, but we're, this channel's probably about twenty-five foot wide and it's an area twenty-five foot wide, probably a hundred foot long that is just full of large diameter trees that have fallen and blocked in the flow of the channel and.
So they're not all living?
No, they're
Dead.
They're dead. They're in the, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item number seven, consider approving drainage ditch repairs for the purpose of erosion mitigation on the north of the Kings Gate Road and Kings Gate Terrace to be completed by Brewer Construction in the amount of seventy thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-five cents using the twenty twenty concrete and asphalt paving drainage, water and sewer contract as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Item eight, consider approving a budget amendment increasing appropriations within the, uh, fiscal year twenty-two budget by a total of twenty-one thousand for the purchase of fire department equipment from the pest funds as requested by the fire chief.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief, you wanna tell us a little bit about the goodies on this one?
Sure. So first of all, on the new command vehicle that we had approved, I think about a month ago or so. That's for all the lights and striping and radios for that. Um, then we're upgrading some exercise equipment at Station One. And then it's also for a forcible door entry prop tool. Uh, we currently use one now that we borrowed from War Acres. We, we usually get it a bit down here about once a quarter, and then we've been bor- borrowing one from Midwest City. They're normally about thirty-five hundred and we're getting this one for nineteen ninety-five. It's, it's used, but it's in good shape, so those are the items that are on there.
Any of the striping or anything with a local business?
Do us.
Are we keeping anything of the?
Yes, the striping is at Yukon Trophy. That's where the striping is coming from, yeah.
Very good.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Thank you. We always love a good sale. All right, let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Item nine, consider approving the purchase of body camera units, software and hardware, as well as the storage of evidentiary video with initial cost of twenty thousand three hundred and ten dollars and thirty-four thousand twenty dollars paid annually for five years to watch guard video in accordance with the state contract SW one oh five seven W as approved in the twenty twenty-one twenty-two capital improvement budget as recommended by the police chief. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief, how quickly can we get, how quickly will we have these cameras?
Right now, in the current market, it's hard to say. Um, they are building them and have them available, but they're, we're not the only agency requesting. So it's hard to say. We could be looking at six months to a year before we actually get the devices.
Okay. Thanks.
I think it's wonderful, just not only for our citizens, but our police. I, I think it's a great thing to do. Right, let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
All right, now, when, item ten, we'll consider a motion to recess as the Yukon City Council and convene into executive session for discussion regarding the employment and proposed compensation of a municipal judge as provided for in twenty-five OS two thousand three, section three oh seven B one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
That's, and no discussion. Vote, let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
All right, and I request that Tammy, Doug, and Roger, anyone else? Join us, please. Item number eleven, consider a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene as Yukon City councils. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
No discussion, let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Any new business?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council discussion will start at this end tonight with Councilwoman Yonda.
Well, I'm glad to see the, um, all the students here and good luck with your mock trial. Thank you.
Short and sweet, same thing. Proud of you guys.
Okay, Councilwoman Kachini?
Well, I wanted to wish, uh, uh, thank you to all our residents that have been supporting our veterans, uh, throughout the, uh, city, the state, and so forth, especially with the love of November coming up. Please remember your veterans, uh, they put a lot out there for you and you've got a lot to show for it. So thank you.
Yeah, also thank you to the high school students that are here and Mr. Andrews. Uh, I had the privilege of serving on s- s- student council, uh, under Mr. Andrews' direction uh, way back in the nineties. So, hey, guys, I would just say this, you hear old people say this to you all the time, but, but I'm gonna say it to you again anyway. These are the days of your lives. This is the time of your life. Live it up, enjoy it. You, you won't get to go back, so have a great time, uh, while you're at it. Take advantage of the time you've got.
All right, I'm gonna say the best is yet to come. Cause I, I think that the world is at your feet. Um, I'd like to say a special thanks to our parks and rec department for our wonderful, from the mummy and son all the way to the Halloween party that we had on Saturday. They did an excellent job and they, uh, really served our community well. Also, uh, coming up, Patriot Project is this Friday. The parks are gonna be all closed for an all-day service project with Southwest Covenant. Uh, we appreciate their work. It'll be at Chisholm Trail, Taylor Park, and Freedom Trail Parks. So those parks will be closed. On November sixth, we'll have a pumpkin harvest craft festival in the Jackie Cooper Gym. That is a new location. It's from nine to three. Come out and support. There'll also be a bake sale and taco sales and library book sale. Then on November twentieth, Chill Your Cheeks, the five K mascot dash Jingle Watch and Kringle Carnival. Then we'll also be having opening of Christmas Park, uh, Christmas in the Park that night. That is not very far away. That'll be starting Christmas in the Park. Also coming up is the mayor's Christmas party. We have a mayor's essay contest. We're doing pre-K through three and then fourth, fifth, and sixth. We're doing pre-K through three and then fourth, fifth, and sixth. The topic is what does Christmas mean to you? Even if you're homeschooled, you can turn those in to the Parks Department and we're asking Yukon Public Schools teachers to support this, Southwest Covenant and, um, what is it, St. John's. Uh, to support this and to be a part of it, cause I love reading these essays. Uh, make the most of your tomorrow and be kind to one another. This meeting is adjourned.